Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five, chapters two, three, one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall and filed in the city clerk's office. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Present, is present.
Council President Gonzalez.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Mr. Edward Cologie is legislative counsel. He is present as well. Wesley Bridges, city attorney, is present as well. Again, this is a call to order for the ABC, ABC Board Meeting this evening. We have one matter of business. Madam President, if you'd like, I can read the invocation now.
Yes, please.
Certainly. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and our greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, as I said, there's one matter of business on the agenda at this time. This is Resolution twenty-five dash zero, zero, one, resolution granting renewal of plenary retail consumption license one, 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 three, three, zero, nine, nine, zero, zero, eight, six, oh, nine Lounge LLC for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five licensing period. And please keep me honest, Mr. License Inspector, as I understand it, this is a pocket license at this time.
Yes.
Correct. Thank you. Madam President, the matter's been vetted by the, our ABC detective, as well as our License Inspector for complete list in terms of paperwork, and it's up to you, if you'd like to ask for a motion for approval for this resolution.
May I have an approved Resolution twenty-five, zero, zero, one? So moved.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And at this time, Madam President, we do have to allow for public comment for the ABC meeting. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak for the purposes of ABC alcoholic beverage control at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to move the civic comment for this ABC Board Meeting itself, if there are any members of the Board that would like to speak.
Is any councilwoman? We are all good. May I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Excuse me. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Moving on directly to Trenton City Council, rescheduled conference and regular meeting for, on this day, January twenty-eighth, as advertised at five, directly following the ABC Meeting. Call to order. I have a, please stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And in the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five, chapter two, three, one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall and filed in the city clerk's office, and posted on the city of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Vice President Edwards. Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilman Harrison.
Um, he's on his way, just FYI.
I'll note he's in route, thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
Present, is present.
Council President Gonzalez.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Mr. Edward Cologie, legislative counsel, and city attorney, Mr. Wesley Bridges. Thank you. And Madam President, if you'd like, I can read the invocation once again.
Yes, please.
Certainly. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and our greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, it's my understanding that you have some items and individuals to give remarks under presentations, if you'd like to introduce them.
Yes, I have asked, um, we have some, uh, report that was released from the Trenton Water Department, Trenton Water Works, that we have asked the mayor to come forth, and he has agreed. Um, Mr. Garcia, can we allow fifteen minutes?
We can.
Oh, he's here. Good, good, good. Thanks. What's that?
Whenever you're ready to start, Mayor, or Madam President.
Great. Uh, good evening, distinguished council members and members of the public. Uh, what I wanted to do is provide a quick overview of, um, what happened with DEP and Trenton Water Works. Um, if, I just wanted to reference, um, a two thousand and nine administrative consent order that outlines a lot of problems that, uh, Trent Water Works that we've had to address, particularly with the closing of the reservoir and moving towards storage tanks. We've always lacked resources to completely, complete the job, and there has been years of under financing and a lack of resources from the state. Last two years, DEP has periodically come into Trenton Water Works at time operating, um, uh, Trenton Water Works, uh, periodically since two thousand and nine. Um, and for the last two years, we invited them in, uh, DEP came in to actually assist and work, uh, with the, with Trenton Water Works personnel. They would come in, uh, at least on a weekly basis, or at least bi-weekly basis, and, um, they commissioned two studies that came out on Monday. A one to three sixty overview of the assets and liabilities of the corporation, and another one regarding managerial, technical, and financial capabilities. While they give a stark assessment, um, it's not the end of the world for us, and one of the recommendations was either, um, there were, there were various levels of responses. One was to do nothing and allow Trenton Water Works to continue to operate. We do have a hundred and fifty employees. We service five municipalities, including Trenton. On the other extreme was to completely privatize and sell to a private, uh, company. I will say that, um, private companies still have, uh, uh, problems with, uh, environmental violations. We're not unique in the state of New Jersey or, or in the country. Um, there are other companies that's, that do, uh, receive violations. Uh, we're no different. We're not the worst, um, but we do have them, and we, we do recognize that we do need to make substantial upgrades. Since I came in, we have made, uh, a lot of progress, and for the first time, actually the reservoir was ordered in nineteen seventy-five, uh, to be decommissioned, and, uh, we started on that progress. We're actually going to, uh, switch to water tanks, uh, to be in the service municipalities, and that is underway right now. We had a, we had to actually acquire property in the service municipalities. We had to work with the townships, and, uh, we're, we're doing that. We're actually putting the Trentons' tank on Prospect Street, uh, and that will be in the next few years. One example of, um, the shortcomings and, um, was, uh, our billing and our, um, customer service. One of the things that the problem we have is that since COVID, we had a moratorium on collections. So for over three years, we haven't been able to collect. Um, uh, a lot of people said, well, since there's a moratorium, I don't have to play my water bill. So that has been, uh, and that is done by the state, and when the moratorium was lifted, it was then subsequent, subsequently put back down. Um, there is right now a moratorium. We can't have shove, shut offs, and until that, we can't collect. One of the benefits of, 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 um, moving towards a regional utility is that the resources and the financial power can come from five service municipalities and not just one of Trenton. We need bonding capacity to do over six hundred million dollars in capital improvements over the next ten years. We can do it alone, if that's council's prerogative, or we can get a shared responsibility among the other municipalities. I personally think that's a way to go. We'll still keep the T in Trenton Water Works. We'll still have, protect our, uh, employees. Uh, they'll have civil service protection, uh, but we'll be able to have the other municipalities have a seat at the table. Right now, fifty-five percent of the customers of Trenton Water Works are, reside outside of Trenton. So they have, uh, demanded a better say in, in our operations, and I think that's reasonable exchange for having their muscle weight. Um, right now, we do have great, uh, support from the legislators in the fifteenth Legislative District. If it, if the governance includes Hamilton, that will bring in the fourteenth Legislative District. So we'll have two legislative districts fighting for us in Trenton for the resources, uh, we need. If we do nothing, we have to go it alone. We have to make these upgrades ourselves. We have made substantial progress, but there's so much more that we have to do. Um, we've worked hand in hand with DEP. We, they're bringing in, helping us bring in middle management. That was another problem is the ability to recruit and pay middle managers. Um, we've not, not been able to do that with the resources we have, but with a, moving towards a regional utility, that will go a long way with helping us get the resources and get the talent, uh, to run the water system. Um, we don't want to privatize. We don't want to sell to a private company, um, but we recognize that if we do nothing, it's all the burdens are on our shoulder, uh, to make the improvements. Um, and, uh, they have been substantial. We've initiated the lead service line replacement program. We've, um, done under DEP's, uh, direction, a new intake system in the Delaware. Um, unfortunately, that has had setbacks, but we use DEP's guidance, we use DEP's engineer, and we use DEP's vendor contractor to, to put it in. So right now, we're working to see how we can get it running properly. Right now, we still are drawing thirty-three million gallons of water each day from the Delaware. We're processing it through the filtration plant, and then it goes to the reservoir, and then it's distributed. We have a fifty-year-old filtration plant that is, uh, becoming obsolete as, as we continue. Um, so again, we can either go it alone, or we can bring in the other, um, municipalities and help us get the resources to pay for all the upgrades that we need to keep the T in Trenton Water Works. If anybody has any questions, if I may.
Are there any councilmembers who wants to, um, ask any questions?
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams, and then Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Uh, Mayor, so, reading through this, there are some things I found concerning. Um, in the statement, uh, that was issued by yourself and the other mayors, it says, "This entity must be separate and independent from Trenton Municipal Government, hence able to access special financing, advance capital work, and be operationally efficient, attract additional talent, and remain free from political influ, interference." What does the phrasing and remain free from political interference actually mean?
Well, we had, and this is no reflection on this current council, you are all rational actors. We had a council, a previous council, who just said no to a lot of upgrades. We probably wouldn't be here if it wasn't for council's interference. We brought on Steve Pico, a former, uh, Assistant Commissioner of DEP, to be our director, to finally bring that professionalism. After ninety days, they would not allow him to continue. Um, and it's things like that, uh, upgrades, system upgrades, uh, that, uh, were, um, delayed because of the previous council. So there is a, uh, there is, um, a benefit to having a utility that I can't control, that you can't control, uh, but that will operate independently. It doesn't have, it's not the, the best. Um, uh, you know, just look at Trenton Parking Authority. Um, they, they're a completely independent agency, and there's things that we would like them to accomplish, but they are an independent agency. So one of the biggest complaints by, uh, DEP and as well as our neighbors is that there was too much political interference, especially the previous four years, uh, of my first administration.
Okay, 'cause I saw, um, Commissioner Lotiret's comments, uh, on NJN Spotlight, and he talked about council, uh, not appropriating anything to fix this, where this council, I don't think we've turned down one appropriation for Water Works.
No, and I, and I applaud you all collectively, how, um, you've been serious about making upgrades, about serious about bringing improvements. Um, there have been dozens of resolutions that have gone through before you, and I don't think you've turned down one of them.
Okay, thank you. And my other question has to do, because particularly concerning for myself and I would imagine Councilman Harrison, because we were two of the petition gatherers that helped save the Water Works fourteen years ago, amongst others. Thousands of Trentonians were involved, and we actually, uh, first municipality in New Jersey history sued to get the right to have a referendum under the Faulkner Act, and we were successful in saving the Water Works at that point. So this is really sad that we're here. But when, um, there's one part of the statement that also says that a, uh, excuse me, an accounting of the cost that will be needed to fairly compensate the city of Trenton for its asset. Does that language mean that we will lose control of the Trenton Water Works, or we're being forced to sell it by the state of New Jersey?
Not at all. Keep in mind that there are only two municipalities, as the five, that the complete, uh, geographical territory is within Trenton Water Works system, that is Ewing and Trenton. Um, one of the models is a weighted model of, um, how many customers you have, Trenton would still be on, on top of that. So that's one system that I favor. Um, and again, you're also in the driver's seat. You have to approve anything we do as a first initial step, and it's still debatable of what, we're still researching whether this has to be approved by the voters, which I'm fine with. Uh, the last time they had a referendum as an elected official, as an assemblyman, I, I, I voted no, or I supported the no vote. Um, uh, so I was with you on, on stopping it. The problem was fourteen years ago, we didn't say, okay, let's completely invest in the system. And it is, again, it's not the worst system in the world, um, as a lot of, uh, folks may want to paint it. It still delivers, the majority of time it operates, it delivers, uh, water that's in, within meeting safe water drinking standards. Um, we do have times, as any, you could Google, there's systems across the system, uh, the United States that shut down, that, um, uh, have to deliver bottled water. We have not done that. Um, so, um, we know we have our challenges, and we're meeting them. Um, but I, I think that collectively and rationally, we're still digesting the reports, we're still meeting with the service municipalities. We're a long way to go before a proposal is, is put forth. In fact, I would suggest that council form a subcommittee, uh, to also equally, um, weigh in, um, because ultimately, you're the first stop, um, to approve or not. The only thing I caution is that if we do nothing, we have to come up with a plan to get the six hundred million dollars, uh, to fund all the, the capital improvements that we need over the next ten years.
Okay, and, uh, my last question, uh, would be, what the timeline, if this were to go forward, I know there's a lot of things we have to consider, you have to consider your administration, the public, what is the timeline by the Department of Environmental Protection and our suburban neighbors to try to make this issue come to fruition, if we agree with it?
Well, there are a lot of people who would want that decision made next week, and that's not going to happen. It's, uh, uh, I think we're going to be studying the issue for the next six months. Um, I don't, I don't think anything is going to be done before, uh, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, so, you know, regardless of what happened prior to this council, um, this council has approved so much money, so much supplies, so much materials, uh, we've really vested and poured into our Trenton Water Works. I mean, tonight alone, we have four resolutions on the table, totally four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that we're putting towards, you know, Trenton Water Works and what Water Works needs, and we've been consistently doing this, as Councilwoman, um, we have just said, you know, we haven't turned anything down, as you said, we haven't turned anything down. You know, we are vested in having better water, um, addressing the community, meeting the needs of all the municipalities that we serve. Um, uh, Mike, I guess my question, and I just want as much clarity as possible on this, because obviously there's intricate interdepartmental issues with Trenton Water Works that just saying all these other municipalities coming to the table and having a say or oversight is not necessarily going to fix anything if we're not fixing the problem within Trenton Water Works, why we have these issues, why we continue to have these issues. We have inner bickering, we have financial concerns, we have management issues, we have procedural issues, you name it. Um, what is this board going to do about that? Like, what is their say-so in this, and what will be their financial contribution to this? Again, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is being, uh, most likely approved by this council tonight, going to Trenton Water Works, and that doesn't even count what we have approved in the last two years alone. So what can we look forward to for the city of Trenton, and what are we giving up in our rights to Trenton Water Works by doing this?
Uh, that's an excellent question, and I would urge us to continue to spend whatever it needs to make those improvements, because what a deal killer is, is that any new entity that, that, uh, takes over the governance has to absorb the debt. So, um, we don't want, uh, Trenton taxpayers hurt anymore necessarily, but if it, we move to a regional utility, then the, then the debt should be shared among the municipalities. So that is why, that's the one benefit that could come out of this, that we could have more muscle power to get things done. Um, we're still working on, uh, upgrades to the filtration plant, uh, the roof, the H-back, um, there, um, are systems that need upgraded there. Um, so there's a lot of projects that need to be taken care of, that we just don't have the resources to do that unless DEP comes in, the state comes in, the feds come in, uh, to help us with those upgrades. We think that by going a regional approach, you'll have five voices, collective voices that will be able to lobby for these fundings to take place.
And so in those other municipalities, having this oversight or these boards to lobby for what should or should not happen with Trenton Water Works, where does that leave Trenton City Council and our authority over, you know, what we approve and not approve, and what may or may not be still necessarily coming out of our own budget?
You are the toughest step in the process, so, um, uh, whatever proposal, uh, gets put together in the next six months or so, council has to approve this, and you can simply say, no, we want to keep completely in Trenton's ownership, which is a rational decision, but also bear in mind, it will come with a heavy burden to raise the money completely to do the necessary upgrades that, that, uh, are needed to take place to avoid further regulation or a hostile takeover. Right now, Trenton Water Works is subject to a lawsuit that, um, uh, the, the plaintiffs want another entity to take over completely. We can either do it ourselves and negotiate that, or put it, uh, leave it up to the courts.
So in your opinion, Mayor, is this, um, is this a matter of lack of funding that the city has to put towards Trenton Water Works?
One hundred percent.
Okay, and what in your, if you, if you pulled a figure out of your head, what would be the number that we would need in addition to what we already have in the budget for Trenton Water Works that would get us to where we need to be?
It's estimated six hundred million over the next ten years. We may very well have to decommission the filtration plant and come up with a new one. Um, it's fifty years old, and it's a, and it's a structure that needs to be completely rehabilitated.
And so has there been a discussion over, uh, a financial promissory note coming from these other municipalities coming into this?
That's part of the negotiation, but today, we will have to float a bond, and Trenton will be responsible for, uh, a default. Now, with the regional approach, it's borne by the region.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes. Good evening.
So in the report, it says that stated Trenton Water Works' primary deficiencies are either directly or indirectly attributable to organizational failures. Water treatment infrastructure doesn't run itself and is highly influenced by the people who are responsible for its maintenance, rehabilitation, operation, and proper maintenance fail to follow recommended equipment, on and practices, and a general complacency throughout the organization has resulted in a diminished technical and managerial capacity of Trenton Water Works. This inadequate organizational leadership has also detracted from the financial health of Trenton Water Works by allowing delinquent accounts to grow considerably. Further, the lack of Trenton Water Works and city staff, who are sufficiently knowledgeable in financial processes and procedures, inhibits Trenton Water Works' ability to have waivers and purchase orders approved in a timely manner, including critical purchases such as the chemicals. It says that it is necessary to address the capacity, the deficiencies, uh, identified in the report. If Trenton Water Works' leadership cannot empower and motivate personnel to improve both their individual job performance and the assets of the utility, a change in personnel at all levels is warranted. Concurrently, a sizable financial commitment is required to adequately respond to the deterioration, right, of the physical assets. So with all that being said, and we've had this discussion many times before, some staffing is just inadequate, some leadership is inadequate at Trenton Water Works. Things need to change, um, overall, so, you know, if we bring in, or we partner with the other municipalities with that, are they going to bring in some managerial staff that are going to help to oversee what's happening? Um, is there going to be the proper training that's given to the employees that are there that has been long overdue, so that people, um, know what they're doing and are held accountable? And are proper disciplinary matters, measures going to be taken to address those that are not doing what it is that they're supposed to do, right? Are managers going to be held accountable for actually overseeing their staff and doing the job instead of worrying about petty miniscule things? They need to worry about Trenton Water Works. So what happens when we, if we partner with these other municipalities to the employees here? And I'm not saying that I want anyone from Trenton Water Works to lose their job, let me be clear with that. I want you to be great at your job, but most importantly, we need you to do your job, right? Even on the managerial level. So what happens from that regard when it comes to if we bring in and we partner what other resources? Because then it also said that we have the limitation on people having to live here, and if people are coming from other municipalities, then does that mean that we're going to lift it, the residency requirement altogether for everyone that works at Trenton Water Works, even those that currently live in the city of Trenton?
The big deficiency in Trenton Water Works is middle management, and, um, there've been, we've been plagued with vacancies, and as a singular residential, uh, required, um, uh, entity, um, we have hard time, uh, attracting the talent, um, because we can't afford to pay competitive wages, and we also, um, have a resource issue that we need to fulfill. Uh, DEP, who's been working with us for the last two years and has been in the plant every two weeks at least, um, floated an RFP in January this month to bring in- two weeks at least, floated an RFP in January this month to bring in middle managers to help us with, with the managerial prerogatives. So, it's always been a lack of resources. There was a time where the Chris Christie administration wanted us to sell the Water Works, and that's, we're back to, we had a referendum, and as a result, they wouldn't approve any upgrades. We still had a MOU with, with the Christie administration. They wouldn't approve things, and were kind of forcing us to die on the vine. We fought back on that, but we still are recovering from the, on the day one that I started in the administration, we had 70, seven zero vacancies at Trenton Water Works. And even by filling partially, you still have attrition, you still have to fill more. So, we are working with DEP, they are helping us with middle managers, and that's something that's going to really help get a better structure to the employment at Trenton Water Works.
So when it comes to the people, if, if it's only going to be DEP, so if you're dealing with the other municipalities, they're not going to be bringing in any of their own employees? Well, the possibility is there, right? If, if there's a vacancy, somebody from another municipality could work at Trenton Water Works?
We have to go that route now by necessity. Our, your ordinance says you must hire Trenton folks first, you can't do that. You go to the service municipalities, you can't do that, you can go outside of the service municipalities. We're at that, we're at that stage right now. So we need, we need to have the middle managers so that they can train the incoming employees so that they could take over the organization. That is not happening right now.
So will there be a, a retraining of the people that is already there?
Through managers, that's why you have middle managers with the knowledge to get the job done.
So I think that that's where performance evaluations and things would then have to come into play, because I don't think that they do any of that citywide, really. That needs to definitely come into play, because we have people that have been working in many departments throughout the city that are just existing and not performing. And so if we're going to be bringing in other people that are going to be training and looking, then we need to do our fair share of assessments to make sure that we're getting our money's worth on both ends of the spectrum with them.
100%, but that also takes resources that the city unfortunately does not have.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Council Vice President?
Thank you. A lot of what I wanted to say was said already. I just want to reiterate that specifically Councilwoman Feliciano and I have been addressing this issues upwards of two years. We have addressed the incompetencies and complacencies about the staff.
Just give us the names and, and I, I don't know that. So I would urge you to convey what deficiencies there are, what staff members need to go.
So DEP has been oversight for the past several years.
Yes, two years, for the last two years they've been here.
So this report states that there's been inadequate leadership, understaffing, and poor training, cultural complacency, communication failures.
Okay, what specifics are there? I, I don't, I don't necessarily accept everything as gospel that DEP said, and they've come in here a number of times since 2009, and we're back, we're on a cycle. We actually welcomed them in for the last two years, and we said, give us the deficiencies, but there's no specifics in that report. And if you find them, just please refer them to us.
Well, I, E, the employee that was falsifying records when he was.
It's gone.
So.
And there's, there's systems in place to avoid that from now on. We now have GPS in, in Trenton Water Works vehicles now. We also are requiring the, the testers to take pictures when they're out on the field. So those, we've put safeguards in there so that doesn't happen again. But that's one employee, and it's a shame that we have 150 employees, the majority are Trenton residents, hardworking. We have three really tough women that are running the filtration plant. DEP has pointed fingers at them, and I think that that's outrageous, because they, I go in there and I see the hard work that they do. But I, I would ask for specifics if you're going to point the fingers. That gentleman who was the inspector, absolutely, the tester, absolutely, gone. But I, I think we need specifics even from DEP than just a blanket statement that, that there's managerial deficiencies. What are they?
I think performance evaluations would have helped determine that. I think that there needs to be proper processes in place, just reiterating some of the things I've been saying for the past couple of years.
Okay, just give us the money to do that.
In order for me to consider an independent utility entity, I would suggest that if this is going to be considered, that we need to maintain some type of council oversight. If there's going to be a board separately from what already exists with this governing body, I would suggest, to your point of forming a subcommittee with the city council, that whoever the chair of that subcommittee is, needs to be on that board. And every municipality should do the same, so that every council could be on that board. Furthermore, and, and why I say that we need to maintain council oversight is for public inclusion, accountability.
You have council oversight right now.
But we, we have been making recommendations that have.
Where are they? Could you forward them to me?
Trainings, I can forward you.
We have started training.
You're being very combative.
I'm, I'm just answering the question.
Everyone else up here on the dais that spoke the respect, without cutting them off, and I'm asking for the same, sir.
All right.
Thank you. I have recommendations, and I will forward them to you, and I will gladly pull up every last single suggestion and recommendation that we have made, and forward that to you as well if you would like. I have no further comments.
Thank you. We look forward to the, the suggestions.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison?
Mayor, you talked about the previous council. To be honest with you, I think the DEP in this state has a huge problem, because the DEP in this state could have stood up to the last council, could have been fining the last council for not passing bonds that we should have been passing. So now, when this council here is going in the right direction of trying to move the city forward, now you're coming along saying, hey, by the way, let's create this board. Where were you for the previous four years when the council was out of control? Nowhere to be found, state or DEP. But now you're coming here, and now you're telling us we need to create a regional board. Think this is a joke? It's embarrassing? You should have stood up then, then, because the people in this city deserve this state. They start taking this capital. Where the capital? I don't know if anybody seems to realize that. Where the capital? And it annoys me when the DEP just now wants to do a report when they could have been holding the last council, which I was a part of, which made me sick to my stomach, that we weren't passing bonds, we turned this place, we turned this city into a war zone with all this fighting every time. It was embarrassing. So yeah, it breaks my heart, then now the DEP and the state wants to stand up now? Where were you then? Where were you then? We needed staffing then, we needed mid-staffing now. Give us the funding. Stop talking the talk and start walking the walk. It annoys me that the DEP is just going to continually write, why weren't you writing those letters when the last council was out of control? You kept saying you were going to fine them, and you did what? How many of my previous councils got fined for not passing those bonds? Exactly, zero. So there you go. So DEP and the state, you want me to hold you and respect you? Stop coming here now trying to bully this council, who actually gives and cares about the community and the people of this great city. Don't, to me, this is disrespectful. This report, to me, is disrespectful, how you're slapping the people of this great city in the face when you could have been holding the last council accountable. You just looked the other way, you looked over there, and you didn't want to deal with the issue. That's the problem what happened. You should have been dealing with the issue. There's a lot of city employees here, a lot of directors that know exactly what I'm talking about. They were on eggshells every day, didn't know how, when they came up to stand where you're at right now, how they were going to be attacked. That's, we're here to do the city's business, we're not here to attack people. So please state, the governor's office and the DEP step up for the city of Trenton. And please, don't write us reports, give us the money, give us the mid-level staff, and probably if you would have held a previous, this council here wouldn't have to be dealing with this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So, Mayor, mine is not a question, mine is a statement, and I'm probably going to be back pretty much on Councilman Harrison here. We have been watching this fiasco for several years now, and we have been realizing that we're not getting the assistance that we needed. In the last two years, we have come a mighty long way. This council has approved, we, as my colleagues have said, there's nothing that has been denied for the most part when it comes to our water department. We have fought hard. When they told us that our water department was up for sale, and we said, no, ma'am, no, sir, we are not up for sale. The bottom line is, is finances, is funding. We know that in order for us to get this moving, get it to where we needed to be, we need the funding. We've been doing our part, but we also know that we are at a disadvantage. We have been at a disadvantage, especially since Christie came in and did all that he did with taking funds from us. We have, we remain at a disadvantage. So we're at, I'm, I'm right behind my colleagues here. We need the state to step up, we need DEP to step up. There are a lot of things that our city is being hogtied about right now, and the money is what's going to make the difference. Folks say it doesn't make a difference here, and it doesn't, absolutely. When you're going to different cities and you see what they have, and you know that they can do things because they have the funding, and we, again, we are the capital city, we should not be begging for dons. We don't, we are brown bag lunches don't belong to us, crumbs definitely don't belong to us. We should have the funding, we already know that, we knew something was going to be coming down the way, because as much as we have been doing it, still was not enough for us to be at this stage, knowing with all that we have already progressed in, and still is not enough. We're asking the state, we're asking DEP, do your part. You want us to succeed, let's do it and work it. We want to work together, we're showing that we're working together, we have a council that is working with one another, we have a council that is working with our administration. We want to get this together, we wanted to get working properly, but we can't do it if we don't have the proper resources. So I just want to echo what my colleagues have said, we need the funding, we need to get it, get it together, we need to work together, work collaboratively, so we can get our city together. Our water work system is not for sale, and I'll say that over and over again, and I will never vote to, to sell, to sell our water department. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So thank you, Mayor, for being present here this evening on such short notice, but as we all know, this is very important to all of us. And I'm not going to reiterate most of this stuff, but I do agree with everything that was said here on the dais. It does bother us that we see the Department of Environmental Protection has been over this for two years, and then here we are, you know, going through this lengthy report. So with the sake of us and time, because we haven't all gone through the actual report, I would like to just suggest that if possible, we can have some type of workshop, some type of training. I was going to ask Mr. Kay this on the side, just to see if there's something that we can coordinate, so we can get more information, dig into the report a lot more in-depth, and that way we can have further questions later on in the future.
Sure, and I'd be more than happy to revisit this with you. And I know Director Semple is here as well to answer any questions, but it is an important issue, and I, and I think that I commend you for protecting the institution of Trenton Water Works that has so much potential, but it's always been a lack of resources. And that's, and it is a shame that we're, we're at this juncture right now, but working together, and still, it's up to council to decide which direction we're going to go. So the administration intends to give you a proposal, it's, it's going to be a workable proposal, but you're in the driver's seat. If you don't want to, to go that route, that is perfectly a rational decision, but at the same time, we have to get the resources to do the job.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just real quick to Councilman Harrison's point, right? I remember, and then when we all first came on and got together about this, there was the concern about DEP requiring that we had to do X, Y, and Z. But then when you would go to the DCA and say, we need X, Y, and Z, they kept saying no to the X, Y, Z. And it got to the point where we wanted a meeting where it was DCA, the, the goal was to have DCA and DEP with us in the room, so we could have everybody face to face and hear both sides of what was going on, right? And this was under Councilwoman Frisbee's tenure as president. We went back and forth, and we were asking, you know, for these, it, it is, it is not fair, and I just want to say on the record, it is not fair what the city has been going through overall with different challenges and struggles as it comes to getting the resources needed. You have one state institution saying you have to do this, but then the other one pushing back, saying, no, you can't do that, and we're not. So again, it's almost like we are just destined, or it's just predetermined that the city is going to fail. This council has been great in doing what it is that we've been tasked to do as far as moving things forward, but I do agree and go back yet again, the state needs to step up and do something and stop shackling us like this, and allow us to do what is needed to help best serve this city. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That is an excellent point about the dichotomy between DCA and DEP. We think we have worked on that collectively to make sure that DEP is, is the sole monitor when it comes to water issues. But that was a, a rough battle to, to overcome, and it was Chris Christie's DCA that blocked a lot of improvements that should have been made.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Yeah, we're going to ask for Police Director next? So we also asked that the Police Director come just to give us a sense of what is going on and what is not going on in the city of Trenton when it comes to ICE being in the city of Trenton, there are a lot of rumors going around. So we also asked him to come and just bring some sense of calm to the city and bring some accurate information so that the public is aware. Thank you, Director Wilson.
Steve Wilson, Police Director. So, in the, during the course of my duties since the new POTUS has been, took office, I know that there's a, a large concern about ICE being in the city. So I took the time to contact that agency, and there's a lot of rumors and innuendos about what they've been doing in the city. They haven't conducted any raids here. They are specifically going to target the, the, the gang members, the people who, who commit what we call Part One crimes. Part One crimes being, you know, the, the most violent homicides, sexual assaults, robberies, aggravated assaults, domestic violence, ag assaults, thefts, those are the Part One crimes. And those who are here illegally and involved in criminal activity are, are those that, that agency is going to target for, to take into custody. As far as the Trenton Police Department, we are strictly guided by the Immigrant Trust Directive, and I'd just like to just read a little bit about what we can and cannot do as police officers, and I'll give you a little background on the, the Immigrant, Immigrant Trust Directive itself. So in November of 2018, the Attorney General issued Directive 2018-6, known as the Immigrant Trust Directive, or ITD for short. This directive was then revised in 2019 and has been in place in our state since then. As a reminder, the ITD was designed to strengthen trust between New Jersey's law enforcement officers and the state's diverse immigrant communities, thereby ensuring that victims and witnesses feel safe reporting crimes. The directive draws a clear distinction between state, county, and local law enforcement officers who are responsible for enforcing state criminal law and federal immigration authorities, including Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, who enforce federal civil immigration law. The directive limits the type of voluntary assistance that New Jersey law enforcement officers may provide to federal immigration authorities, and applies to state and local police officers, correctional officers working in state prisons and county jails, and the state and county prosecutors. So as far as New Jersey police officers go, we cannot stop, question, arrest, search, or detain any individual based solely. we cannot stop, question, arrest, search, or detain any individual based solely on actual or suspected immigration status. We cannot ask the immigration status of any individual unless doing so is necessary to the ongoing investigation of a serious offense, which is, are those that I mentioned earlier, and relevant to the offense under investigation. We cannot participate in ICE's civil immigration enforcement operations. We cannot provide ICE with access to state or local law enforcement resources, including equipment, office space, databases, or property. And that's some of the things that, that Trenton Police Department or local police departments cannot do based on the ITD. As far as the schools, and I know there's some concern with the schools and ICE going to the schools. And it's not my opinion that they will go into any schools. If there's any school-aged persons that are involved in the offenses that I mentioned just a few minutes ago, it's my opinion that ICE would not enter a school for that, that they would go after that person if, if they were legally able to do so when they were not in school. Because one, that's just tactically unsound. You don't bring that kind of issue into any schools. And ICE, you know, they're not going to do that. They're not going to go in the schools and cause such a ruckus like that. So I, I think that it should be noted that we do have those that are involved in criminal activity that have illegal status here. And some of those are members of the Trinitarios, some of the members of MS-13. As you know, that you've seen some MS-13 tags in, in the, in the city of Trenton, particularly in the South Trenton area. Those are the folks that ICE will be targeting that are involved in those criminal activities.
Council President? Council President? Sorry, it's Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. Police Director, just to make it simple, because I know there is also some confusion, kind of A, B, C, D. What is the rules of process if ICE were to come in as far as notifying? How the city would know that before it comes, happens to refer?
Okay, so, so the federal government doesn't have to notify local authorities. They're federal government. However, I think based on my relationship with that agency, that we would be notified if they were operating in the city in, in the capacity that you've been reading about.
They're certainly not legally required to notify local authorities.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Could you just, I'm sorry, Director Wilson, can you just kind of go over again what, what it is you're not allowed to divulge? You were saying you were not able to divulge.
Oh, the things that police officers cannot do?
Correct.
According, okay, so according to the Immigrant Trust Directive, we cannot stop, question, arrest, search, or detain any individual based solely on actual or suspected immigration status. We cannot ask the immigration status of any individual unless doing so is necessary to the ongoing investigation of a serious offense and relevant to the offense under investigation. We cannot participate in ICE's civil immigration enforcement operations. And we cannot provide ICE with access to state or local law enforcement resources, including equipment, office space, databases, or property. Just so you know what I'm reading from, you can go to newjersey.gov/trust and you can read this same information. There is some things that we may be required to divulge, such as information involving this, this type of the advanced criminal behavior that we talked about involving part one crimes. If we have knowledge of that, we, we do have to provide that information, but only as it applies to the criminal element that participates in what we just talked about. I'm, I'm summarizing just to try and, you know, condense, because the immigrants, the, the Trust Directive is several pages long.
Councilwoman Frisbee and then Councilwoman Feliciano.
So thank you, Director. So you just answered, I believe, the question that my first question was. You've informed us of all these things that you are not allowed to assist with ICE. But my question was going to be, is there anything that you are allowed to assist with? And that is only when it comes to records of criminal, if, 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 if your acts.
Yes, also, if there's exigent circumstances, we can assist such as, I mean, they are law enforcement agency. And if they are in a circumstance that is an emergency, such as life endangerments to the, the officer, then, then yes, we will assist in that.
Thank you. And then the other question, what, and I think you kind of answered it, but I'm going to ask it again anyway. The proper protocol for dispensing information? If something were to happen and it comes into our city, what is protocol for alert, alert, alerting the citizens? Is there a process? Is there a protocol for getting the word out to us if we need to? What information, would you be allowed to dispense? And how should that be dispensed to us?
Well, the, the federal government operates outside of us. So any information that is public information, I think that we could put out. You know, arrest information is public information. So anything like that, I think that we could put that out if we became aware of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. So I think that, thank you, Director Wilson, for coming forward tonight. And thank you, Council President, for having the Director speak as well. I think that the, the concerns come in, well, one, once we hear that, you know, the potential of ICE coming in is, is scary, right? So there's that. But then on the other part, they're coming in to take out illegal criminals.
Yes.
Not people that are illegal, that are not criminals. And so I think that the fear overall is that they would come and just take everybody, right? And so then it's, it's a matter of going into the schools and going over here and going over there. And, you know, take, taking people. But if we're looking at it in the right context, if that is what they are doing when they come, if they come, or when they come, right? It is important how we are relaying information. So is, is it even possible for you to, to even tell the, the council and stuff? Oh, well, they're here, they're getting, you know what I mean? The criminals. And then you have somebody going out saying, well, they're here. They're getting, like, it, it kind of defeats the, the purpose. So if you could just guide us again, like Councilwoman Frisbee said, you need to guide us on what, how, how does that work? Are you just going to only tell the mayor? Would the council know? If the council knows, can we say anything? Should we not say anything? Like, just make it very clear right now on the record so we understand what it is you want us to do if we were to get word that this was happening. Because one thing is for sure, I don't, I don't want anyone to be upset with anything that I'm saying or to mislead or misguided people in any kind of way or instill further panic. You know, I work in the school district and, and I don't want to incense, a sense of fear. So tell us exactly what will happen and what you want of council.
Okay, so we are not going to interfere with any federal investigation because I'm not going to jail for doing that. And I don't think council wants to do that as well. So if, if I get knowledge that they are operating here, I would not compromise their investigation. And, and I don't think that any of you would, would want that to happen as well. So I want to, I want to make one thing clear that ICE, over the years, I, I, back in the day when I was a young officer and working in undercover capacity in the vice enforcement unit, we, we did have a proactive relationship with them. We did human trafficking jobs together and things of that nature. And when we had gang stuff involving those who were here illegally, we, we were allowed to contact ICE and everything. So they have been here. They were here last year. And I just want to give you just a couple of samples of the type of persons that they have been arresting. Convicted in Mercer County Court, endanger, endangering sexual contact with a child by non-caretaker. That was one person that came and arrested. It was illegal. There's another person, two counts of sexual assault and second degree and criminal sexual contact in the fourth degree, endangering welfare. That's in our neighboring town. They've been here and they picked up that person. Also unlawful possession of a machine gun, possession on lawful purpose, terroristic threats. That's an arrest that they made in the city of Trenton. Specifically, that was an MS, MS-13 gang member. So these are the, these are the kind of folks that they are targeting. So I, I don't believe that any of our good citizens have anything to worry about at the moment because they're going after this type of criminal behavior. And so I kind of think that's the best I can describe it. It's trying to calm, calm the, the waters, so to speak, for the city. I don't think that folks that aren't involved in the serious crimes and gang activity have anything to worry about at the moment. I mean, things could change, but right now, this is where it stands.
So do they tell you, like, when they pick people up? Will they tell you, we picked up John Doe? He was a sex offender. Like, do they tell you, the people, when they're picking him up? Do you get a roster of who they are and what they did? So then you could say, okay, they, they took 20 people and they were actual felons? Like, verify that, that they were criminals?
No, I think anybody that gets picked up in that capacity, they would contact the prosecutor's office or the county jail because that's who they would put, if the person was picked up and put in the county jail, obviously they would put a detainer on that person. Or these, these folks are already convicted. So they would contact the prosecutor's office that they, they picked them up, not necessarily local police.
And again, last question again, just to, so you're not going to tell us anything? So basically, we ain't saying nothing because we ain't going to know nothing? That's what you're saying, right?
There, there may be an occasion when I can pass on information. And if that occasion, I will certainly do so.
Okay, and then you will advise the council if we are allowed to repeat the information or not, is what I'm asking.
Yes, but I, I'll, I'll go through the mayor's office first. And then I'll, I'll also find out that, as you know, as the council president, there are some things that you, you can hear and some things you can't hear. So when, when you were the former council president, that's how it works.
Right, okay, thank you.
Council President? Just one more thing.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So going back to my original question, I, I'll, I'll say this. So one, I would like to know when, because we know that it's inevitable with the new administration having taken office now. He's already promised that they're coming, they're coming, they're coming. So as to not allow our city, our citizens to be in a state of panic, because we're all, and I'm, I'm sure, because I've gotten several calls, emails, I'm sure my colleagues are getting the same. My question now becomes, will you and/or the mayor put out a, have a conference that speaks to the citizens? Put out a letter that speaks to the citizens to give them the comfort? There are people that will be watching this, but everybody will not. So that we put out something that gives a, I won't say a disclaimer, but gives a, a sense of calm more. Because what you just said actually puts some of the people that have contacted me, some of my constituents, it should put them a little bit more at ease. They're not coming in here to our schools and rip our babies out of there. And so that, that's what folks think. They can't go to their churches, their synagogues because they're afraid that they're going to be out there. They don't want their children playing out in the public now because they're afraid their children are going to be snatched up. All of these are conversations that are being had right now. So knowing that ICE is not here, has not been here in the last week to whatever, since Trump has taken office, they're just, I, I just believe that it would help this community if something were just simply said to let them know that is not what they're here for, that is not their primary reason for being here. They're coming here for those that have been engaging in criminal activity. And that's what is being targeted. Then along with that, I'm going to go, Councilwoman Feliciano, just, you and she just had this semi, semi, semi-conversation. Protocol is, because I think now back to when we were going after Osama Bin Laden. We don't want drones. We don't want people on phones. We don't want people alerting everybody of when they're coming. Because now that defeats the purpose and they can't, the, the purpose of getting the bad guys, now they get a window via us. So you don't want, I would think, the proper protocol, as you just said, is if their conversation is going to be had, you will have a conversation with our president. And then I would think that we would follow leads between, behind you and our mayor so that we know that we're dispensing things properly. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's, that's as it is always. So there are things that we can, we can put out and it'll go from the mayor to council president, yes.
And then council president will alert us whether or not it is okay to say, or what we're allowed to say, what we're not allowed to say.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President?
I'm going to go, so Vice President, then Councilman Harrison.
Thank you. I've heard kind of conflicting information because a few days ago I was told that if that ICE was required to contact you and the mayor and then Council President and I would be contacted after that. But then this evening, you said a few minutes ago that the federal government does not have to notify local law enforcement when ICE comes in the community. So if, if that is truly the case, then how can we either substantiate or unsubstantiate a lot of the claims that people are saying they saw ICE around the community and things like that? That is my concern. Not to say that these things are, because a lot of them are false and have been deemed false. But if people are seeing ICE, if that's true, how could you know?
Because if ICE is here and they're making an arrest, they will wear identifiers, just like the Trenton police do, on their vests. On the front and back, it will say ICE. And if they don't have that, they will have a badge identifier around their necks. So you will know the difference between Trenton police and ICE agents.
Thank you. Next. And correct me if I'm wrong, councilors. When, when a person is undocumented or an illegal immigrant, when they commit a crime, they could possibly face deportation, criminal prosecution, or both. In my experience in the federal government, typically they are deported when they are committing a crime. So I'm not sure how the federal government is specifically targeting undocumented or illegal immigrants who are committing crimes when typically they are deported when that happens or prosecuted when that happens. So I don't, and I don't expect you to have the answer to this, but I'm just wondering how they're able to even signal them out or pinpoint them out if these things are actively happening when they're happening, like in terms of them being deported.
Well, I don't want to get into a political conversation, but there are those who have been deported and they re-enter. Quite often that happens. They, they are found guilty of a crime, they get deported and they come back. And those things are monitored by the federal government through Homeland Security, through Immigration and Customs Enforcement. So there are those that have re-entered even after having been deported. And I think those are folks that are being targeted as well. Also, the argument on the other side is bail reform allows a lot of these persons, and not just the illegal immigrants, but our criminals in general to get out in a, in a quicker time than we would all, you know, hope. And unless, I don't want to speak for ICE, but unless they are notified that this person's in custody and put a detainer on them, ICE has a very small window to put a detainer on folks that are, have that status that we would, you know, we would see them arrested for their major crimes that they've been, been involved in and their illegal status here. ICE only has a small window to put detainers on those folks. And then bail reform kind of messes, messes that up, but not, not just the- But not just the ICE agents, but even our police department. We have a problem with bail reform, should be just a little bit tougher because we have so many repeat offenders. I could give you a list of repeat offenders that include violent crimes all the way down to property offenders, that keep getting out and then victimizing our community.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate you for coming in here.
Yes, ma'am.
And informing the public. Appreciate you.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Director, is there a number that the community can call, like a tip line, just to report overall crimes in the community?
Yes, you can email or text TPD Tips. And for our crime, as usual, you can call our dispatch non-emergency number, or obviously, call 911 if there's a crime in progress.
I'm hoping this year, you can be able to get more resources from the DCA to help you recruit back some officers here, and overall, help move the city forward. Because I know that we need more officers. I know we're going to be having a new class coming up soon. But overall, I think everybody in this city doesn't want anybody to see anybody going in schools. But you're right, we need to get violent criminals, for whatever gang they're from, off these city streets.
Yes, sir.
So I agree with my colleagues that we do not want to see families in churches or anything like that. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Wanted to say thank you so much, Felice Director. I know I missed some of the stuff that you said, but also for just being open to inform the community. I know we did something yesterday. And just to let everyone know, and I'll say it again, para los padres que están allá, que tienen miedo, que tienen un plan de preparación, que tienen que saber quién va a cuidar su niño, tienen el número de emergencia para darle a la escuela, que ustedes no tienen que tener miedo para mandar su niño a la escuela. I just wanted to make sure that they know they can send their kids to school. I will say, after we did the live yesterday, two of my four who haven't been in school did come to school today. So hopefully, it's getting out, and people are actually listening to what's being said. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. At this time, I believe we have another presentation from Mr. Paul Harris. And this is for NJ Department of Environmental Protection Franklin Park Project, regarding Resolution 25-19.
Thank you. Thank you, interim Director Harris. This one will be this long.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I'm going to be three minutes? Good evening, everybody. We are seeking a grant for Franklin Park. You know, we know funding's tight, so we instructed our staff to look for grants to fund our programs and our upgrades. So what you see on the slide here is currently Franklin Park. That's the area that we're going to, it's about three acres, and we're going to be doing some work there. The grant is called Jake's Law. And Jake's Law, what it does is it encourages us to build playgrounds to exceed the current ADA requirements. And what that means for you, it means something that's accessible. It means 25% of the equipment is accessible by disabled and non-disabled. It means the unitary surfacing has to be shaded, and then it means there's fencing around the playground and generally quiet. Jake's Law is funded by the DEP. Historically, it was, it only went to counties. This is the only year that we'll be eligible to get this funding. Next year, it won't be, we won't have access to it. We are looking to get up to a million dollars. So $750,000, and then it's going to be a $250,000 loan. The timeline is, we had a public hearing, a public meeting, with Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg in our conference room on the 16th. Today is the public hearing that's open to the public. We will submit the application on the 4th. We expect to hear back in the spring, and then we expect to begin construction, God willing, in the fall. Again, this is the footprint of the park. I'm going to show you some more slides. That's the existing playground here. Now, what we've done here is, we put some new fencing in, and we've done some work with the playground, all the playgrounds, because we're not guaranteed to get the grants. So in the meantime, you know, do the upgrades that you can do. The slide that you see here is more of a footprint, but I'm just going to pass this because it's hard to see. This is a better look at it. This is the concept plan. And basically, what we're doing is, the playground's going to be 5,700 square feet, okay? That's bigger than it is now. We are not taking any trees down. We actually are expanding the playground, and there will be a tree within the playground area. We're also building a pavilion. This is the playground as you see it now. If you're looking at the playground, there are some structures here that are important for people with disabled individuals. There's a ramp there that will allow people who are on a wheelchair to go up and play. There are devices here for those who have sensory issues, okay? For example, if you have issues with your sight, we have devices here that you can play, that you can hear. The unitary surface is important, because a lot of the playgrounds that you have, they require, they have mulch. This is a surface that you can ride a wheelchair on. That's important. And we're going to build pavilion. I love pavilions. So this is, we're going to be, this is going to be a pavilion. It's going to be near the playground as well. It's going to be 25 by 25. So the environmental impact is important. You know, there's going to be short-term noise. It's a long-term benefit for the city. It's going to allow more children to use the park. There's no new lighting or traffic patterns proposed. There's no removal of any trees. And when we're doing the actual construction, there'll be noise, but there'll be dust suppression, and then we'll make sure there's a soil erosion measure in place. We expect the program to cost a million dollars. And in addition, we're going to, there's a basketball court there that's a short court. We are going to do a double court now. So what you're going to have is a brand-new playground, new curbs, new sidewalks, handicapped parking on the street. And then there's going to be, there's some bluestone that's in the little pavilion area that we're going to repair. And again, the basketball court will be double the size. And then park features across the board. The grass will then be seeded as well. So what you'll have is essentially a new playground, and improved access to the park and other features. And this is in line with everything else we've done here with what you funded. And that's where we're at. If anyone has any questions or concerns.
Anyone, Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg, and then Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Director. You, I just want to say you did an amazing job with this, with the design, and with the design team. And I just wanted to applaud you for holding the public meeting that you had, about two weeks ago, week and a half ago. It was well-attended. Franklin Park neighborhood is very much involved, as you know. They're very much involved in maintaining their park, maintaining that community, maintaining that neighborhood. And this is definitely something that's coming well-appreciated by that community. The upgrades are well-thought-out, and something that they have been asking for, for quite some time. I did put a lot of the deets of the upgrades out on social media after the meeting, and it was very much well-received. So I just wanted to applaud you for your efforts on this and all the other parks in the city of Trenton. But on behalf of the South Ward, thank you very, very much, and the community is very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So I don't have a question. All the questions that I did have for you, you have answered already. So I just want to commend you on not making those who are differently abled a second thought as a parent of a child with disabilities, as a former chair of the ADA Board. It is important to me that those who are differently abled are thought about. And this is really a great, you thought about it, everything, even the one with sight, because that's sometimes things that folks do miss. You have the ramp in there, which helps those who are able to, in some degree, to catch on, latch on, they can do that. And then the touching, the making sure that, the grade, even getting a wheelchair, that is some of the issues that I've always had with my child, is getting him into a park and getting his wheelchair in there without trying to figure out how do you get past without tipping over. So I just want to commend you and your team. You did an absolutely phenomenal job on this. And I look forward to this going into play in the South Ward, the Franklin Park, the community. They're going to be greatly benefited by having this in their community. Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
I just want to say, great job once again. You exemplify true care and concern, and then holding true to your mantra of quality of life for those in the city of Trenton. You have held true to your word from the time you started and as we continue to move forward. So I'm encouraged, as you continue to move throughout the other parks, throughout the city. I love the part, as Councilwoman Frisbee said, about the differently abled. When we went to Orange Street Park and then watched to see how, with the braille and all that kind of stuff, like just the thought and everything, and then, you know, seeing the children and, you know, taking all of that into consideration, things that many of us that have those abilities may not think of, you've thought of them, and you consistently think of them. And so thank you for the tremendous work that you continue to do. Job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to say, phenomenal job. Expect to know less. And as you do this, I love, one of the things you've been bringing to the table is forward-thinking and expansive thinking. And as my colleagues talked about, the differently abled folks of different types of ways that they can be able, particularly young ones, play and entertain themselves, but also grow and learn. Like to, in the North Ward, and I would love to get some of these, I don't want to say they're toys, but I would love to get some of these playgrounds in the North Ward, so my, so the kids in the north have access to sensory exercises, different things, but particularly as we clean up with the pollution areas more so, that these become standard almost, not maybe for every single playground, as I understand, there is a cost involved, but also for the increased amounts of autism. Because that is something anecdotal. I don't have solid research on that yet, but I believe Rutgers may be doing a study that, you know, we do have increased amounts of autism because of environmental pollution we've had for decades and decades in the north. So thank you very much for all your work, and thank you for your approach to this job.
Just so you know, Sunny Vareen, assuming we can find money, Sunny Vareen was my next-to-my target. It's a big site. It's right behind a rec center. That will be a site for the next ADA compliant playground.
Thank you very much, Director.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Director, just want to say thank you and your staff. I know you guys have been hard at work. It's always good to see our parks being addressed and us collaborating on this council work, and to make sure that we support all your hard work and all your staff's hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, interim Director Harris. I want to say, great job, as always. Same thing as my colleagues who said, it's always exciting to see us investing in our kids, because if we don't invest in them with our Recreation and our Education Department, where are we going to be? So thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Madam President, if you give me one moment. Go ahead and announce this. Madam President, it's my understanding from the director that the purpose after the, to file this presentation, purposes for a public hearing. A public hearing is required as part of the funding? As a part of the funding. So if it's your wish, then we could go into that public hearing at this time. We, I would ask you or the council, what would you like to limit any possible public comment to?
We're going to do three minutes. That's fair.
Just to make it clear, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to limit public comment for this particular item to three minutes per person?
May I have a motion to limit the public comment for this item to three minutes?
So move. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Please note, the council is not obligated to respond. Seeing none, Madam President?
We have one, two.
Okay. Mr. Roland Pot. Please state your name and address for the record. You're going to want to press the button on that device.
Roland Pot, 113 South Montgomery Street, Trenton, New Jersey. Just wanted to say that I support the plan as presented by Mr. Harris, and the opportunity for the public to comment on this park plan as required under the funding application is an important step. I'm glad that you've opened that up to the public, and hope that you'll pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Director Harris. But good evening, Jesus. My name is Edward Livingston, 32656 Grand Street. Once again, thank you very much for everything that you have done. I support the plan as well. But the question that I have is, for security purposes, is the park going to have the same security purposes as most of the parks in Trenton with cameras and maybe, and/or the park rangers? If we still have to have that? That's my only question, sir.
For the benefit of Paul Harris, interim Director, Parks and Recreation, for the benefit of the public and council, did not, neglected to mention it, there will be security cameras installed. Part of our public meeting we had with Franklin Park residents, that was a request. And then we do have security guards who are full-time on our staff, and they rove, and they look at all the parks. So in addition to those, yes, and then that's directly linked to Trenton Police Department as well.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak to this resolution or agenda item at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, I imagine that would be, if you want to ask for a motion to conclude the public hearing to this item?
May I have a little second?
I'm sorry, who was the motion?
Frisbee.
Thank you. And the second?
Feliciano.
Gracias.
Dana.
Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano? Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano? Excuse me, Council President, good service. I apologize.
Yes, it's okay.
It's going through a bunch here. Okay, that would conclude the public hearing to item 25-19. Madam President, if you want to move on now to public comment for agenda items only?
May I have a motion to have?
No need for a motion. You can just move on to public comment for agenda items only. If we could have the public comment clipboard, please. And could I have the additional public comment clipboard, please? There should be an additional public comment clipboard there. I'll trade with you. There we go. It's for agenda items, yes. If it's for general public comment, Ms. Vaughn, then you want this one? Thank you, madam. And Madam President, we do not have any individuals listed for public comment. And Madam President, we do not have any individuals listed for public comment for docket items or agenda items only. Was it for general public comment or for a specific item on the docket? General public, so that would not be this time period?
This is just for agenda items.
Okay. Yes, sir. I'll have you sign it at the, oh, it's a resolution, then yes, that counts. I will have you sign this and go right up to the podium. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, before we proceed to this part, just for clarity sake with this, Resolution 25027 is a resolution appointing council member liaisons to the boards and commissions. Should we have a list then in front of us of the appointed people? Because I don't see that. And then, you do have an ordinance here.
It says an ordinance. I did share with Mr. Garcia that he has it listed as a resolution and then it's, we just got to make the adjustment.
May I see that ordinance that is in front of the council, please?
But the ordinance.
This is a draft, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Okay, so, Madam President, if I could explain that for a moment?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, the reason that there is an ordinance in front of you that is a draft ordinance is that it's a draft proposed ordinance by one of your council members?
Right.
Regarding liaisons. Now, the liaisons themselves, as I understood it from good feedback from council, there was, the entire council was not exactly in agreement for that purpose. So, it's not possible for me to record all those appointments unless the council actually agrees upon it to the resolution. So, if what I elected to do in that case was, yes, you do have the resolution, but the resolution would have to be formed by your feedback and agreement as to who will be assigned to what board.
Okay, we never forgot.
Can we, yes, Council, Council Vice President?
I'm sorry. No, we did figure out all of the boards and commissions. There weren't any overlapping boards or commissions for council, so that should have definitely been prepared for this meeting. I don't know, obviously, there was some confusion, but I do have the list if we want to go with it and still discuss it.
Certainly, Councilwoman, if you have the list, then I'd be happy to hear it. And if you want, if you want to make a motion or an and or discuss and then approve, then that, then more than receptive.
Council President? So.
I apologize if we missed that list prior to this meeting, but from what I had understood, there were individuals that wanted to discuss those appointments.
Okay, I wasn't aware that they wanted to discuss it, but that's fine. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. If we're to discuss this tonight, may we all get a copy of that list? Please, that would be.
I was going to say, we should probably all have it, one. And two, I was going to say, can we listen to the person who actually signed up first and go in that order? And then, when we get to that part, we can either discuss it on a day or pull it into the next meeting.
Certainly, Madam President. I believe we're still a public comment for agenda items only. And we have Mr. Pot.
Thank you.
Hold on.
I just wanted to get to that after we hear him out.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would like to go with, listen to the person who signed up first and then we can get to this one because it's later down on the line.
We do have Mr. Pot. Did you speak to 25-027 yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Permission to speak?
Right ahead.
Permission, okay. Thank you, my name's Roland Pot, 113 South Montgomery Street. Here to speak on number 25-027, Resolution Appointing Council Member Liaisons to Various Boards and Commissions. I'm actually here as a member of the Trenton Downtown Association Board of Directors and our chairperson, Austin Edwards, had to beg off early tonight. He wasn't able to be here, but he did leave me with a few words, which I'll read to you and then I'll add a couple of my own comments right after that. These are the words of Chairman Austin Edwards, the Trenton Downtown. And let me step back just for council as well as members of the public. Trenton Downtown Association is the special improvement district's management corporation, primarily tasked with the clean and safe activities for downtown Trenton. Collecting an assessment of the commercial property owners downtown and reinvesting that assessment in the downtown district to make it clean and safe. So, it's a 501(c)(3) organization, which manages that, those clean and safe programs, among other economic development programs for the downtown. Chairman Edwards asked me to say, over the past few, so this is the time of year when the council chooses the boards and commissions for the coming year. So, the comments relate to that. He said, "Over the past few years, Jen has been deeply," speaking about Councilwoman Jen Williams, "has been deeply involved and ingrained with the TDA and the downtown. She has been instrumental in helping through the executive director position search. She has made herself available for TDA board meetings and she has demonstrated a talent lacking in the city to be able to disagree without being disagreeable. We thank her for her continued service to TDA." So, those are the words of Chairman Edwards, who asked me to read them because since he had to leave early. I also just wanted to add that, you know, we're very fortunate here in Trenton to have a group of great council people and anything that the council is interested in engaging with on TDA is much appreciated and we thank you for the time and insights that all of you have given to TDA. Traditionally, this role has been the North Ward Councilperson that has served in it. And I think, you know, Councilwoman Williams has been on for a couple of years, partly because her Mill Hill residency, which is in the North Ward, also because of her longtime experience as a zoning board member, really deeply understanding the business of Trenton. And then, also, as someone that is very interested in public safety, working closely with the North Ward Citizens Police Advisory Council. So, that qualifies her very well. We'd be lucky to see her continue, as we'd be lucky to anybody that is willing to put the time and effort that she has put in over the last couple of years. The TDA welcomes a committed board member that would put in the time for the meetings as well as outside committee work as part of that board membership. So, thank you, Councilwoman Williams, for all of your participation and thank you to the council for your consideration in this important upcoming year for TDA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pot. Yeah. So, Council Vice President, do we have any other persons signed up?
No, ma'am, not at the moment.
Can we just give us like two minutes?
Council President, if that is all, may we continue with?
Yes, please.
Wonderful. Up next, I have Public Communications Petitions and Reports. Do I have a motion and a second, please?
Maybe I have a motion for community, for the communications reports, please.
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
That's motion by Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
All right. Second by?
Edwards.
All right. Council VP Edwards?
Yes.
All right. Excuse me. My bad, y'all. Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right, motion. Moving on to ordinances for second reading and public hearing.
None.
I have none at the moment, ma'am. May I proceed?
Yes.
Wonderful. Next up, we have resolutions.
Madam President, are there any items that you wish to extract from potential consent agenda this evening to discuss separately? Or are there any items, or is there, do you have a consent agenda and you'd like to motion on consent?
Yes, I'm going to ask members who may have questions on any of the items.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I have just a few light questions on question, Resolution 25-015.
015.
25, 25-018.
018.
25. And then, 25-020.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Council President?
Yes.
So, my understanding is 25027 will be its own discussion. So, I wouldn't necessarily ask to have my own question time for that.
Okay.
Unless needed. But I do have questions about 25013, 25018 and 25025, as well as 25026 and 25003.
Oh, 003.
003.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Feliciano?
I'm just saying, just to go back to 25027, just some clarity on what we're doing with that.
Yes.
That's all. I don't think that should be in the consent agenda. I mean, I don't know what we're doing, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe 003 is an ordinance, not a resolution. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Anyone else? That's it? Think that's it, Mr. Garcia.
Understood, Madam President. Then on your call, if you'd like to start with the first resolution for discussion.
Yes, we could start with 25-013. And that was Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. As I see Director Livingston come to the podium. Good evening, Director, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, thank you. So, my question about this, more so for dissemination by the public, because I know some folks have asked regarding this loan at this time, can you talk about the origin of it and how the funding actually works through UEZ for the city to the ultimate benefactor of the loan, which will be the Maxine's property, which has been dormant for many, many years?
Yes, he's in the process of rehabbing the whole facility. And he's done some major repairs to the roof. And he has requested some assistance through the UEZ, which the UEZ is structured for, to help businesses in gap funding situations, which just is. The structure of the loan that we're looking at is a five-year at 3% with a, it'd be a five-year balloon. The most, the benefit of this grant is the fact that on the loan, we will be in first position on the building, which means we'll collateralize the loan quite well. And second part, if everything is successful with the loan, the 1.7% plus the interest returns to what they call second generation funds, which we will be able to utilize in the future for other loan programs and other types of subject. To me, that's very important with, if we get a change in administration next year at the governor's level, we all saw what Chris Christie did with the UEZs. So, if we can have the ability to build up our second gen funds, this will help quite a bit.
When they're the second generation funds, it sounds like that's, would be untouchable by a future administration. It may not be as supportive of Trenton's efforts for economic development.
It's a revolving fund where councils can, projects can be brought forward and we can fund, you know, additional business programs, the future can, yes.
And without this gap loan, this project would not be able to come to fruition within a next year or two because it's been.
Right, he's hung up. He's in a situation, he's put a lot of his own cash into the building and this is one of these properties downtown we see as a future drawing. People backing down the downtown, especially we get the hotel cooking again. This is, you know, a top end type restaurant that'll bring people downtown.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Direct, anyone? Director Liston, really quick, I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. So, the term of the loan payment is five years?
Be five year, on a 30-year amortization with a five-year balloon, which you only pays it off after five, pays the balloon after five years.
Thank you. And then, I see it says an allotment not to exceed 1, 1,700, so we're not allocating that completely to them. We don't know that, that's just.
No, we're going to monitor and disperse it. There's going to be a second resolution coming in front of council approving the contract on this. So, this is just the first phase where we are applying to the state, so the state moves the money, so we have it available. The second phase, this part is going to be qualifying the business for the loan, just like you would close on a mortgage. We're going to have basically a mortgage drafted up. And then, what we will do is proceed with the loan and the process of how we're going to capture the funds back. So, it's, it works quite well for us.
And I just had one more. After speaking to a couple of business owners in the downtown area in regards to this resolution, most of them are just concerned that they will, they won't be open to the community. So, we just want to make sure that momos will, you know, cater to our community, not close at 4:00 PM and then leave when the state workers leave. So, do we have all of that yet or an idea of what their plan is?
My understanding is they're going to be open late. One of the best parts about doing a loan like this is, you know, we can put certain conditions in the loan that they, you know, to receive the loan, that they're going to have to have certain business hours, you know, and stay open until, say, 10:00 PM or something. So, we do have some leverage in lending this money out.
Thank you, Director. Can this go on consent agenda?
Please do, ma'am. Thank you.
Next, we have 25-15, I think that's next.
Thank you, Council President. So, Director Liston, my question with this is, I know this is for remediation of this old cleaners. My concern is, what is, what safeguards are we putting in place when this remediation is done? And do we have plans for this site?
The, there's some plans on potentially renting it out to an adjoining property. The safeguards on the property itself are, you put monitoring wells in and they're monitored on an annual basis to make sure that the pollution is under control. I will tell you that in doing environmental work, it's the most unpredictable type of work you do because you don't know what's in the ground. That's why they put the monitoring wells in because you don't know what kind of flow you're going to get, which way it's going to go, the groundwater is going to move. So, it's monitored for 20, 30 years. And we make sure that, that, we will have issues with selling the property because of such contamination, but it can be rented out, where the city can receive funding for renting the property out to an adjoining owner or somebody else. Where the, the city can receive funding for renting the property out to an adjoining owner or somebody else. We could lease it out if somebody wanted to build on there with the proper environmental controls. So it's, it's, the, these are, this, especially a property like this, is probably the toughest ones you, you're going to do. Uh, cleaners, the, the cleaning fluids they use went down, went down deep, and really did contaminate the ground terribly. I will tell you, an eight thousand dollar change order on this is very, very minor. Uh, when you do environmental work, I started environmental work with estimates of, you know, a, a million dollars, and ended up spending over three million dollars after all the change orders because of, um, the unknowns that are in the ground, especially in a historic community like ours.
Thank you. So my concern still remains for, um, the contamination that we know that is in the ground because of the chemicals that are in there from those cleaners. If we know that there, there are these chemicals in there, why are we proceeding with putting anything on there where residents could possibly be at risk?
Well, we would cap, it would be a capped property, what, what they call environmental controls. So no water would actually run over it, and it would be controlled. So, you know, if you parked the vehicles on it, or if you were putting something on it, um, you know, we would make sure that the public was protected from any type of expo, direct exposure, like, uh, o, o, open dirt or anything like that to the property. So it's very well controlled by the environmental groups.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That's all the questions I have on that. That, um, Madam Vice President can go back on consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Does anyone have any more comments on that? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have twenty-five dash zero one eight.
So that was me, and I actually don't really need to exit the two questions on twenty-five zero eight or twenty-five dash zero two five. For me, they can both stay on a consent agenda.
Okay, I actually had questions on that myself, so I would like to ask my questions. Thank you.
Steve Wilson, Police Director.
Good evening, Mr. Director. Thank you, Council Vice President. Uh, so regarding, um, these, this contract or the sixteen Ford Escapes, um, and then associated, uh, there's a resolution authorizing the contract. Uh, so at this time, why are these vehicles necessary? Um, and can you talk about the longevity and what they will do to improve the department? Because I know we have allotted various ages of various different vehicles. I don't know that we have any of the Dodge Chargers. There are too many of those still running around from the two thousands. But that was a very large purchase at that point, I think, two thousand eight, if I remember right.
Um, so in fact, we still are using some of those Dodge Chargers. Um, we are still using, um, the used, used Crown Victorias that we bought, we bought used uh, from, I believe it was Broward County Sheriff's Department was the original agency. And we have a number of old vehicles that these sixteen Ford Escapes will, uh, replace in our fleet. These vehicles that we are replacing are very high mileage. Um, some of them have over two hundred thousand miles on them, and they've been resurrected by our fleet manager. It's together from older cars that are now out of service. So, um, these, these vehicles, when we, when we do replace the older cars, um, will also, um, help decrease our line items for repairs, because then they will then be under warranty, um, for three years. So any repairs done outside of collision will be under warranty.
And, um, after the warranty period, does the department have its own mechanic and body person who handles these? Or do we go to garages for that?
Um, we, we do have mechanics here. Um, they, they fall under the fire department, because several years ago, our garages were combined, and so our police mechanics were, were, um, put under the fire department. But they don't do major repairs. They keep the vehicles going. Um, and we do farm out our repairs to Ford dealerships and, um, and, uh, other vendors that we utilize.
Okay, and my final question, as far as, uh, if these resolutions are approved, uh, what would happen to the vehicles they may replace, or would you retain those rather than retire them?
Um, we will, we will try and keep the ones that, uh, um, aren't too bad. But the ones that, that we are replacing, I don't, I don't see us keeping a whole lot of those cars. They will be decommissioned and set for auction for the city. And, uh, any proceeds from those auctions will go back into the city's general fund.
Good. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Uh, consent agenda, please.
For twenty-five dash zero one eight and zero two five?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, I believe that is all for.
No, there was one more, Madam Vice President. That was twenty-five dash zero two zero.
And also oh two six.
Six. Okay. Twenty-five dash zero two zero.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Director Honore Terry. Thank you for being here. Um, so this is a, every, this resolution is important to many of us, um, the milling and getting the asphalt down. My question is about the award date. I know that we don't begin, um, putting down asphalt until March, if I am correct. And this says one year from the date, so being that we're at the end of January, uh, top of February, will this, uh, this is going to begin in, uh, February, or will this actually begin in March? Will that be the start date? And I ask that question so that we're not losing a month when we are going to be trying to get these streets repaired.
Uh, good evening, Council. Uh, actually, this contract starts, like you said, on as needed basis. Even though it says February, but we're not going to call them until March, beginning of April, before we start, you know, this delivery. So that, one of the reasons why we have to do this is we want to, we have a lot of streets that we want to do, so we want everything to be ready to go. That's why we're getting this done now. But by March is when we're going to be on the streets.
Excellent. That's, and that was my concern. I didn't want us, that, I thought they, it says from the year of the date of the award. And so I didn't know if that was the date that it was actually approved, or if that's different from the date that we actually began. So you're saying that it is from the date that we actually began?
Colin Cherry, Assistant Business Administrator. Councilwoman, the contract will start as of tomorrow, if it's approved today. It'll be a year from tomorrow. Just as the director stated, we won't call them until we need the delivery. But we'll be locked in, the prices will be locked in, and we'll be ready to go as of ostensibly tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. That can go on consent agenda, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions on it? Councilwoman, Councilman Harrison?
Wally, sorry, Wally. Wally, my question was, when will we get the list of streets and alleyways that you're going to be doing? And when will that be coming out?
Yes, that's going to be, our goal is to try to, we have lists of streets right now that are really bad with potholes. That's where our focus is going to be. And then after those, we jump into the alleyways, and then do a couple of speed hump before we continue moving on. But we have so many streets that, we're doing like seventy-two streets in the city for this summer, and it's all over the city in the four wards.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? One, zero, so, is that okay to go on consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And next we have twenty-five dash zero two six.
Good evening, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Thank you, Council President. So, um, my question regarding this, um, this is something, I would assume it's very new, uh, could be very exciting, because we've talked about shared services and different forms for our city for quite a long time. I know many of our, my councilmembers, myself have talked about this. So this particular one regarding Department of Health and Hamilton Township, there is a couple things in the resolution that caught my eye, and I just wanted to have you explain it for myself, um, everyone, actually, the public too. Uh, towards the end of the, uh, resolution, uh, two five oh two six says, "Whereas the city desires to contract with the township of Hamilton, New Jersey, Department of Health, and designate the Public Health Officer of Hamilton Township as the corresponding position of and for the city for the purposes of overseeing the functions of the city Public Health Office. And then further, after therefore it be resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement for acceptance of health services through the county of Mercer." So two, get two different government entities, one a partner with, uh, Hamilton Township, and the other is acceptance of health services through the county of Mercer. Now, I realize that, um, the portion about the county of Mercer might be kind of a standard contract or standard resolution language, uh, because I'm sure we had to partner them very much during a pandemic. But this, uh, shared services agreement with Hamilton about a health officer and so forth, can you go into what this actually means for the regular Trentonian, or what it's going to mean for us as a government body?
For the regular Trentonian, it should not mean much of anything from their perspective. They should see us having a health officer, which is required by the state. Uh, we do not currently have a health officer serving in that capacity. So this, uh, attempts to solve that particular issue. Uh, from a resident's perspective, they should see nothing different. They call the same numbers, they participate the same. Uh, from the governing body's perspective, at least for the time being, the, uh, health officer in Hamilton is going to also serve as our health officer. Uh, it was determined that they had enough bandwidth to do that. Um, and we think that this is a, a very quick and cost-effective way to, to make that happen.
Okay, and then, uh, how many hours per week would the health officer have to be shared with Trenton?
I don't believe we have a fixed number. I think it is, uh, a collaboration determined based on need. Um, unfortunately, the director is, uh, is not available tonight, but I can get some more detail for you as, um, as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. And how long has, uh, that position of health officer been unfulfilled for our city?
I can't speak to, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but I can find out.
Okay, I know, I appreciate that. And then, um, if you could share just for our, uh, knowledge, you know, what the position entails, its responsibilities, uh, even via email, that would be helpful. I know this, this isn't your bailiwick, but, uh, but thank you for answering my question.
Yes, of course, of course. And we can get you all that detail. Um, but this person is going to do the same thing as our health officer internally, just through that service with, with Hamilton.
Okay, and financially, how does this work out for our taxpayers?
At least currently, it is a, a quite cost-effective method, uh, for providing the service. Though obviously, we're going to evaluate as we move forward. This is something, as you said, that's, that's new. We have not had a health officer via shared service before. So we'll evaluate our need, we'll see how, how it works for us, and then we can, uh, address that moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
It works out well. Uh, consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And now we have twenty-five dash zero two seven. I know we wanted some clarities.
I'm sorry?
We wanted some clarity on zero two seven. So I believe the issue is that we don't have the actual list of the appointments. Um, to my understanding, as we were drafting this, there was no, um, I didn't know anyone had any discrepancies, but most of what everyone chose was, uh, we selected the same one that everyone had, or that they picked as first choice. Is that correct, Council Vice President?
Yes, um, in, in, when we asked for everyone's preferences, there were one or two overlaps that we had cleared up. Everyone has submitted their preferences. Um, there are three council members that have two preferences, um, and everyone else has one, except for myself, I have three. So, um, I can read them now, or do we want to table this for the February fourth?
I would like to table it. I mean, if I could have a motion to table it, just so that way we can have everyone look at the list and review it, um, prior to us being here this evening.
I would concur with that, ma'am.
So move.
So move.
I motion to table it?
You can. Your motion, who's second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in the second. I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Matter's tabled until next public meeting, correct?
Yes, February fourth meeting.
Thank you. All right, Madam President, with that in mind, then, you do have a, if you'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda?
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman, uh, Vice President Edwards, I'm sorry.
Council, uh, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry. Can, can we have the, right, but can we have the clerk read the numbers in to run the roster? So we're just clear that we got all the right ones?
Sure.
Is that okay? Thank you.
Certainly. Resolutions for, resolutions for consent agenda this evening, twenty-five dash oh thirteen, oh fourteen, oh fifteen, oh two seven, oh sixteen, excuse me, uh, with the exception of oh two seven, oh sixteen, oh seventeen, oh eighteen, oh two five, oh nineteen, oh, oh two zero, oh two one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six, all except for Resolution twenty-seven, which was been tabled. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, that brings us to ordinances at this time. And that brings us to ordinance first reading introduction, ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one, and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-two, article seventeen, section one three five of the revised ordinance of the City of Trenton to increase the cost for lead safe inspections and add a filing fee for lead safe certificates.
May I have?
Madam President, if I asked for a motion to approve.
So just a quick question from my understanding. Can I, can we discuss it before we do, or we have to do the motion first?
If you motion and second the matter, then you could have discussion.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve twenty-five oh one?
I'm sorry, that was moved by?
Williams.
Thank you. Harris, thank you. Harris, thank you. It's been moved in the second. Is there a discussion? Go right ahead, Madam.
Yes. Are there any council members who wish to speak to this one?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
So I just wanted to share, um, and I'm sure other members have heard this. There's a big, good bit of concern from, uh, some members of the public regarding, um, the effect of this, of this ordinance, because there's a concern that, um, there may be landlords who do not actually follow the rules and carry through and, and, you know, rather than actually have the lead testing done, et cetera, may shy away from it because of the cost. Now, I don't know that that's true or not, but that concern is out there. So I'm wondering, um, is there a part two perhaps that might need to be visited uh, for a penalty for landlords or an increased penalty who do not, uh, comply with this? Because I think the intent of it, it is very, very good, the intent of this particular ordinance.
Is, um, Director Liston here to answer that question?
Good evening, Colin Cherry, Assistant Business Administrator. Uh, that's certainly something we can explore. Right now, this particular ordinance, however, seeks to get our fees more in line with the surrounding municipalities, because what has been happening is we are so much more inexpensive than private and surrounding municipalities, that we have well exceeded our.
our capacity, and we are not taking in nearly enough money to cover the cost of the training and all of these, all of these inspections. So your comment is very well taken. We'll certainly have a conversation about what our enforcement options are, but for now, we just feel strongly that we need to get this done so that we can stop being swamped by low-cost requests and really bring in the revenue that will allow us to continue this program.
Okay. And may I follow up with that for, since, you know, we're being swamped? Well, do you have an idea how many additional inspectors will be hired to make sure that we are servicing everybody and that we're protecting our residents?
We don't, at this time, feel that the best option is necessarily to hire more inspectors. We think that once we make our fees in line with the private and surrounding municipalities, that what's going to happen is those requests will spread out among those groups. So we will be not inundated with so many requests because we will be competitive with the pricing around us.
Okay. I look forward to part two, hopefully.
Of course.
Councilwoman. Thank you, Council President. So my question, I have two part, one part, two part. What is the current fee for it and what are the surrounding municipalities that we are
I don't have a list of the fees for the surrounding municipalities, but we are the cheapest in the county. The fees for the current, I don't have, I only have the fees that we are seeking to bring it to, but we are the cheapest in the county, including the private sector.
I don't doubt that. If you would just be able to get that information to us, I would
Of course.
like to know that.
Of course.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else?
Started with these, these fees previously, but again, it's a new program, a new rollout, and this just seeks.
And so the chart that's here in, under letter A, this is a new chart or there were other, there were other numbers that were there? See, I think that when we're showing these things, if we show what it was to where we're going, that would kind of help. So for a one-bedroom unit, what was it before this three hundred and fifty dollars?
To the Councilwoman's form of prior question, I will make sure we provide you with all those.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that that would help us to kind of just see better what we're doing. I understand the need for fees and everything like that, I get it, but to Council President's point, just to kind of do the comparison, right? Just so that we can, we can see exactly what's going on. I think we need to see that. Thank you.
Council President? Council Vice President?
Thank you. I just want to concur with Councilwoman Feliciano. Is it possible to have this updated reflecting the changes? Because there, when we talked about this in document review, we talked about the recent amendment that we did last year and the fact that this went up by fifty dollars. So in the rubric, can we put the previous prices with a slash through it and then put the new prices next to it to reflect the changes?
Certainly, we can, we can work with Mr. Garcia to determine the appropriate form for this ordinance.
Yes. And then I would also like to add, like going forward, whenever we do have price adjustments or cost adjustments, fees adjustments, that we always do that as a rule of thumb to put what we're changing it from and then to, so the public is aware of that.
I think that's all the questions. Mr. Garcia, we can move forward.
It's been motioned, moved in the second. I'll call a roll, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
I'm going abstain.
Noted. Motion carried. On to ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero three, an ordinance granting renewal of municipal consent to Comcast of Mercer County LLC to construct, connect, operate, and maintain a cable television and communication system in the municipality of Trenton Mercer County, New Jersey.
May we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero zero three?
So moved.
Council President?
Certainly, there you go.
Yeah, Councilwoman Williams, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a couple of questions regarding this ordinance. So I think, thank you again, Mr. Cherry. So
Of course.
the duration of the franchise is fifteen years, which is a very long time. I understand Comcast has been here ever since we had cable come to the city, nineteen eighty-one, I believe. And the only reason I know that is because we had to convince my father when my mom went on vacation to order it so we could get MTV. That's how old I am. But the reason I bring that up is they've always had a monopoly for the most part. We do have Verizon, FiOS, they did come in later, but, you know, a lot of folks, most folks have Comcast. And particularly when it comes to the internet service, I was, I was glad to see that, you know, they did list, or you all listed, who they provide courtesy cable for and video, internet, rather, and video, which would be the cable. And I was glad to see that the library has that as a courtesy, Trent High, BOE, a few of our schools. But then I saw, under the internet, many schools do not, as well as even here, City Hall, and that's a different story. But for the schools and the firehouses and police, particularly with how communication is, et cetera, and I know, you know, it's too late for this contract, very likely, but I would love to see that they provide internet as a courtesy to our schools in the city, as well as, we had, we don't have that many firehouses for the firehouses, also case for communications and so forth. I know they have secure communications, but in case for a backup as well as police. And I'm wondering, is that something that could be asked for going forward? Granted, this is a fifteen-year contract, which would go through twenty forty, but is that something that could still be at least asked as a courtesy?
We can certainly have a conversation with them. This, this contract is just pursuant to BPU regulations. We don't really have any input into the details of this form of agreement. We could have that conversation with them. Whether, whether they'd be interested is kind of up to them, but that is certainly a conversation that we can facilitate.
All right, I would appreciate that. I think that would help a lot of folks, particularly, certainly with the schools. And then with police and fire, it adds another secure, safe feature. And then my only other question is, in discussions, and this may not have come up, but I know we've discussed in other words with PSCNG, is the idea of trying to get their lines to actually go underground? Because it's very good when we have natural disasters like a hurricane Sandy, but between having Verizon, Comcast, as well as PSCNG, all these lines in some of our streets, like Brunswick Avenue and many others, there's so many telephone wires, cable wires and so forth, strong across streets and along streets, we actually can't plant that many trees in the city. And a lot of the trees, when they do grow, they get into the wires, which causes a problem. Then we have to make an ugly V-cut to be able to hopefully have the branches grow around the tree. But ultimately, over time, what that's done to our city is created a lot of heat islands. And we have a certain, a good number of them all over the city, but we have a strong number of those in the North Ward. And with global warming, as well as the high rates of respiratory issues, asthma in our city, that's something very long-term, but I think it's something important to, when you have, if you could bring that also up to utilities that we have operating in our city, and maybe at some point, we can coordinate a greater plan, at least in some of the tougher areas where we have, you know, utility lines really making it an unhealthy situation for our residents, maybe we can explore, even if it's a few blocks at a time, putting these lines under the ground.
We can certainly bring it up to them. I, I'm not really sure what their infrastructure upgrade plans look like, but it's certainly a conversation we can, we can initiate.
All right, I appreciate it. If you, if you could, you know, when the next round that you do talk to them and, you know, let us know, because very much long-term, we had something as a, as a city, we have to look at for the health of our residents, and this is, we're at, we're at their behest of what they want to do, unfortunately. We can't help ourselves with that. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? If we can move forward, Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And moving from there, Madam President, I believe we missed a motion to approve the minutes of September nineteenth, December fifth, and December nineteenth, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Roll call. Councilwoman, excuse me, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And now, Madam President, moving from there, I believe we have reached a point of public comment. If there are any, I have the public comment clipboard. We do have three individuals listed. It appears two of them have left. We have two individuals listed for a public comment this evening. Public comment will be five minutes in duration, unless I'm told otherwise.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. And please understand, the council is not obliged to respond to you. Mr. Edward Livingston is our first individual public comment this evening.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me. My name is Edward Livingston. I live on Grand Street, Trenton, New Jersey, South Ward. Stand before you today, not with a stop sign, I promise you that. But I'm here to offer insight on the drone influx plaguing our city and state. As of November twenty twenty-four, New Jersey has become the epicenter of identified drone activity. Some of us might have seen drones here in the city. I know I certainly have. I, I've seen drones and other flying aircrafts, what I could not identify. So where did they come from? What do we do about it? I can almost assure you that it was not the Iranian mothership off the ocean. Our U.S. Atlantic Fleet Forces Command would have taken care of that expeditiously. Whoever they are, wherever it may be, whether it's an internal agency doing activities or exercises within our country, a top-secret government exercise, or visitors from another galaxy, we will not have answers from our, direct answers from our national government. So what do we do about it? Who do we turn to? The answer is us, Trenton, our capital. We do it together. So to our leaders of this great city and the leaders of the state of New Jersey, and I'm glad that our police director is here, I propose forming and activating a drone surveillance task force, DSTF, whose mission is to detect, deter, identify, warn, and warn against unidentified anomalies within Trenton Mercer County and the state of New Jersey's airspace. To accomplish this mission, we need to enact laws permanently restricting airspace around our local state buildings and buildings of critical infrastructure. Now, not to, I know I have two minutes left, but not to, not to install anybody's intelligence, but our power grids, our reservoirs that we talked about, anything that make our city run. We also need to require licensing to all civilians with drones. Next, in order to accurately deter and identify any flying objects within our airspace, we need extended-range, high-resolution cameras with light and sound deterrent systems, somewhat similar to what Washington DC uses. They use enhanced protective systems that use signal-blocking, high-definition infrared cameras with laser and sound technology. Now, that's a little expensive, but just the cameras would do. So before the holidays, I traveled around the city to find suitable places for such cameras. I found the old NJN Tower right across the street, the Comcast Tower on Prostreck Street, the Water Tower above the old Stokes Rubber Plant on Taylor Street, the Tower above Roeland Center, and the Flight Tower at Mercer County Airport. With these systems in place, we will have the ability to visually identify, track, and warn the appropriate agency to divert or neutralize the target depending on the threat level. These agencies include, but are not limited to, state and local law enforcement, the FAA, Department of Homeland Security, and the Department of Defense. Ladies and gentlemen, this drone ordeal is not a hoax or fake news. Since the FAA lifted the ban over New Jersey last week, more drones have been spotted over our energy plants, our military bases, our airports, and even over critical infrastructures. Heck, they even flew over President Trump's golf course in Bedminister. I guess they wanted to play the front nine. But all jokes aside, you have to honestly ask yourself, why would an entity or a group perform such coordinated exercises over specific points, I'm almost done, of interest, knowing that we are not equipped for drone warfare? They are a threat, are they a threat or friendly? We will never know unless we pass our own airspace bill, pass our own mandatory civilian licensing, and form a drone surveillance task for, before it's too late. I'm going to conclude by paraphrasing Mr. Les Brown. It is better to be prepared than get prepared. My name is Edward Livingston, and I hope you approve this message. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Trentonians and other visitors. I'm here this evening to address the issue that has come up across our community around the aggression.
Excuse me, Ms. Vaughn, can you state your address for the record, please?
Eleven hundred Stuyvesant Avenue. Yeah, I'm here to address the
the recommendations coming down from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection around usurping our municipal government. Uh, we are under the government of a mayor council form of government, whereby, was it a strong mayor council government? And the council is responsible for the oversight and the funding of all city departments that are largely funded by the residents and taxpayers of the city of Trenton. And that includes, of course, the Department of Water, just like all the other departments. They're all equal and requires your attention and oversight and control and governance. So reading this, it says, today, Commissioner Sean M. Latourad of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection released a report, a technical managerial and financial assessment of Trenton Water Works that highlights specific deficiencies. We haven't seen that report, but we in the community will be requesting it and we'll, we'll peel it black back like an onion. Um, and we will respond accordingly. So the highlights specific deficiencies at Trenton Water Works and recommending the creation of a new public water, I mean, a public utility entity to operate the water system. And this entity must be separate and independent from the Trenton Municipal Government. So, separate and independent of the Trenton Municipal Government. So I just want everybody to know that our municipal council is a governing body and the Board of Directors of Trenton Water Works. And we're not interested in having any other government body or a group of people coming and usurping the seven council members that were elected by the residents and the taxpayers and the voters of Trenton. You are the governing body of that water utility and all the other departments here in the city of Trenton. And I don't understand how did that, a mayor that was elected also would even collude and talk about co-mayoring with other elected officials that weren't even elected by residents of our city. When we went to the ballots, only his name was on the ballot, not any other mayors out of any other towns. They are acting unconstitutionally and undemocratic. Based on the New Jersey Constitution of 197, uh, 1947, the state or any other entity cannot intrude in municipal affairs. That's our council and our mayor. The state only can pass laws, general laws, that all municipalities must abide by, but they cannot pass specific laws that target us specifically. So I hope that all of yous take your duties seriously and your, and recognize the powers of your seats. You are backed by 90,000 residents. You cannot be controlled by somebody who just have an appointed job at the Department of, uh, Environment Protection. Sean Turet is a nobody. He's just an appointed official. And I suspect by, in six months, he won't even have that job. He will be replaced by another appointee. Because when I was on the council, it was Catherine McCabe. They rotate them every election cycle. So it's all a money grab to take control over the revenues of a Department of Water. And we all know it. Take control of the contracts that you all supposed to approve. So this new entity will take over that. And they want to usurp you guys, and I hope that you recognize that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And Madam President, those are all the individuals I have listed for public comment at this time. If it's your wish, you may start with any individual for civic comment.
We'll start with Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you, Council President. So we have, uh, obviously, um, well, first I want to say thank you to everyone for coming tonight. Um, this is technically a triple header, since we had an alcohol beverage control meeting before a double meeting for council. And, uh, there's obviously a lot facing our city. We have Trenton Water Works. We still have, uh, things like the DOJ, which, um, with the administration, that'll be interesting how that, uh, turns out. We have all the regular issues we have to handle. But at the end of the day, there is good happening in the city. And that's what I'm going to try to talk about for a couple of minutes here. We have 90,000 plus Trentonians. And we all have to look out for each other. And what I am seeing particularly, uh, with what happens with this, uh, situation with ICE, they were in Philadelphia today, as I just saw reported before the meeting. Trentonians look out for each other, and we're going to have to. These next four years are not going to be easy. They're not going to be easy for anyone. There's going to be some good things that happen, or going to be some not so good things that happen. But we have to make sure that we take care of Trenton. And part of that is, and I hope when you saw questions coming from council about the water works and what the future is, we're going to be fighting. You know, to quote Winston Churchill, we'll fight in, we'll fight in the streets. We will fight in the hills. Well, the hills are mostly in Cow Water Park and the West Ward, but we'll be fighting everywhere. Because it is important that we protect our city. And that we know what is exactly going to happen for the everyday Trentonian should this sale, or whatever they're going to say it is, or try to put lipstick on a pig, in my opinion, is going to be. We all have to be open minded. I will be open minded. But 14 years ago, the citizens of this city united and voted it down in a referendum. And we have that power to do that again and make sure that we are the voices of change. And we, as Gandhi said, are the change we want to see. And that's something nobody can stop us from doing. So when we move forward, let's make sure we know that we're on Team Trenton. My colleague, Councilman Harrison, always says that, Team Trenton, Team Trenton. That's what we have to think about. And, um, so I'll move on with, I just want to say a couple thank yous right off the bat. Uh, I want to thank interim Director Harris, Natural Resources, and his staff and team. Um, it's been intermittent because of the weather, but trimming the trees on Martin Luther King Boulevard, it's already making a good change. We have some more work that has to get done, uh, but it's making improvements. And we hope to see even more so on our boulevard that honors Dr. King, whose birthday we just celebrated. And that's very important. Because, um, as we take care of Trenton, these are ways to take care of Trenton and honor the past, and we have to do that, too. I also want to thank Director Anna Thierry, Mr. Waya, uh, the Deputy and Public Works for cleaning out all the dumping and all the overgrowth that happened over many years at Rogers Alley, so emergency vehicles can go through. And residents, I had complaints from constituents. It was freezing cold on the day that you had to do it, but they got it done. So there are folks in this city and our city government, they're going to take care of Trenton. Uh, finally, uh, regarding, uh, what Mr. Livingston talked about. Now, it's very, could sound very, very big picture. And I know when we talk about, um, drones and different things in government and what they say or say aren't things, could be conspiracies, et cetera. I do want to bring up a point, because I did see some drones myself. Today, it was announced by the Trump administration that the drones were approved by the Federal Aviation Administration for research purposes. Now, one question about what those research purposes were, they wouldn't say what the research purposes were. So could have been innocent, they could, could be measuring, you know, airstream, cold weather, who knows? But at the end of the day, it's also our privacy. We don't talk about that. You go in your backyard, you have a drone fly over. You know, they're seeing, you have people over to your house, they're seeing you put your laundry out, they're seeing all kinds of stuff. We do have a right to privacy in our airspace above our homes. So that's something I just wanted to bring up to consider going forward. Uh, finally, uh, I would like for our council to consider extending civic comment, uh, going forward, since we only have one meeting per week. Thank you.
Councilman Harrison.
Um, let's see, where do I start? Well, first I want to start with what we talked about tonight, Trenton Water Works. I am not going to support anything about recreating this board. I think, uh, DEP and the state needs to step up, give us the funding, help us get the mid-level, uh, staff that we need. Um, I would like to thank, uh, Wally and Hector and all their staff, the wonderful job in removing the snow and salting the streets. Uh, I would like to thank, uh, George McGill for over 23 years of being the planning board and zoning board attorney. George is an awesome human being. I wish him all the best in life. Unbelievable human being. Um, you're exactly, um, I would like to thank all my, the mayor, um, Andrew Bobbitt, all my colleagues. Uh, my uncle passed away. So I'd like to, you know, thank my colleagues for all their support. And, um, thank you for the, uh, fruit arrangements for my mom today. She truly thanked, she appreciated it. So let's keep working together, like my council colleague said. Let's go Team Trenton.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Thank you, Madam President. So good evening, everyone. Um, I wanted to just address a couple of things. Um, to Mr. Livingston, I am in agreement. I don't trust, uh, what's going on with the drones. I don't trust anything that our newly elected president has said that is going to be for our good. With the federal aid freezes, the cutting of funding for seniors, childrens, and Medicaid, um, I don't see anything so far that is for our good. So I second guess everything, and I do believe we need to be proactive to protect ourselves. Um, when it comes to our water department, I've already stated it, we're not for sale. Um, I stand on that. Uh, I do want to make a few announcements, and that is, um, we have, know that we're getting ready to move into the month of February, and that is Heart Health Month along with Black History Month. So we asked that you would check in on people and also on yourselves to get your heart tested, make sure that you're moving. It is not just, um, good enough to just be, uh, good with eating habits. You have to move. Um, and also, I wanted to announce that, uh, the Smith Family Foundation, in the month of April, beginning in April, March, they're going to start giving out the information. But in the month of April, summer grants are going to open. And it's going to be centering around, um, making fun for our children. I know some might say that it is early to start talking about the summer, but it is not. You have to start planning for it. So I asked you to pay attention, looking forward, um, just forecasting ahead. Also, in March, there's going to be a technical workshop, uh, also with the Smith Family Foundation. So you can go to the site, which is www.sffnj.org. And you can find out more information on that. I would like to also thank Council President for making sure that we got the information needed, for having Mayor Gussioris to speak, for having interim Director Harris, who I hope will be appointed as permanently Director Harris soon, Director Wilson, um, all speak and quell the fears and, um, give clarity to some of the discussions that have been going on in the community. So thank you for that. I'd also like to thank our, uh, directors that are here, that are always out here, um, our fire director, our water director, um, to all the directors that come out, to even our DCA. I thank each and every one of you for coming out. You don't always have to be here. You could be doing other things. You could just count us as non-important. But we appreciate you being here, giving your ear and hearing what it is that we have to say, what is going on in our community. And I believe with that, I am about done. Oh, my West Ward, West Ward Community Conversations will be happening in, happening on February 2nd, which is the second Tuesday of the month. Always at the, uh, police station, uh, on Artiston. Welcome you to come out at 5:30. With that, I am going to read a portion of our city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank you, and I hope that everyone gets home safely.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Um, Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I too just want to thank the mayor for coming and speaking to us, um, as well as, um, Director Wilson. You know, these issues are issues that we as council should not be speaking on until, you know, we get, uh, further information from the administration, as so as not to put out misinformation to the public. Um, so it is, I'm grateful that, you know, they were able to come and speak, and we were able to ask questions, um, and inform the public, you know, of firsthand knowledge. Um, I, I too, um, you know, concur with my colleagues about Trenton Water Works, and I just hope that we could come to a viable solution so that Trenton Water Works does remain in our control. However, you know, I do have concerns for operation of Trenton Water Works, how we are managing it. Um, and, you know, it, money is not always the solution or the sole solution. You know, there needs to be other things, um, put into place for Trenton Water Works to run smoothly and to service the municipalities that it does serve. Um, other than that, I just wanted to state that there will be a, uh, local meeting coming up. I cannot disclose the date and time publicly, but if anybody's interested, it will be about ICE for the local community, um, at a location in the city, date and time. So please contact me if you are interested. Uh, Mayor Reed Gussiore and Director Wilson have confirmed their attendance at this meeting with the community, um, regarding ICE and the public. Um, thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you, Council President. Excuse me, I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Council, Council Vice President.
Thank you, uh, Council President. Um, first I want to just speak to some of the things that I was not able to say earlier in regard to the DEP's report about Trenton Water Works. The things in this report is very unfortunate, though very expected. We have, in full transparency, have been speaking with the administration and the Water Works Director about some of the things that we have been experiencing, things that have been brought to our attention by the residents, including like customer service, feedback, and things like that. There are issues within the department that are fixable. And we recommended training, we recommended supervision, we recommended staff meetings periodically, more frequently, to provide more oversight with the employees. And to see the report kind of basically corroborates the things that we've been experiencing that was brought to our attention without even having any type of contact with DEP. So I want to say that, you know, as the governing body of Trenton Water Works, we gave our professional opinions and recommendations. And I, I feel like that was not taken heed to. Um, I'm very taken aback by the mayor's comments to me tonight. And I will follow up with him respectfully to just clear anything, any misconf, uh, any confusion or miscommunication on any of our parts, as I would like to have a respectful relationship and so that we can move forward and be progressive in our approach when governing this city. I am and have read the reports and, um, do have several interpretations of these reports, considering an independent utility entity. And, um, I will wait for the mayor's leadership on that. But as a governing body to the Trenton Water Works, I'll be talking to my council colleagues, and I know a lot of us are opposed to this. Um, however, I want to say that the lift to maintain this utility is heavy, and it should not just fall on Trenton. We service four other municipalities separate from us, and we have to find a way where we can get more funding. If we can get help from other municipalities, if we can get help from the state, if the county has any funding, if there's any federal funding, we need to be actively trying to procure these different met, uh, different avenues of funding. We cannot afford to do this on our own. And because it is ours, because these pipes are ours, the municipalities are not allowed to replace the pipes themselves. I explored the idea of being, um, of, you know, maybe possibility of shared services. I explored the idea of being, um, of, you know, maybe possibility of shared services a couple of weeks ago with the municipalities that we do service, and because we own the pipes, they cannot touch them. So something has to give, and if we can find some type of common ground that allows the municipalities to be able to take out bonds and to be able to take on some type of financial responsibility to replace these pipes, we need to at least explore that while maintaining transparency, while maintaining council oversight with Trenton, because this is our utility, and we need to be respected. But at the same time, we have to hold our employees accountable in the department. We have to weed out the bad actors that are making everyone else look bad. The, the report talks about complacency that is not far-fetched. We do have to weed these people out, and we have to focus on disciplinary action. We have to implement performance evaluations periodically. We do need to hold the staff accountable. That is, that goes without saying. So I just wanted to just say that, and that my recommendations are for enhanced training and certification programs, improved management oversight, strategic financial management, and customer service overhaul as well, because people are not getting positive feedback and things like that when they're reaching out. There's billing issues, people not receiving bills, there's a lot of things going on. So I will, again, communicate with my colleagues and see what it is that we can do without this utility being taken from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know it was going to do that.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We're going to be, I'm going to be very brief. Um, but first I just want to say prayers going out to the family of Ms. Maisha Koon, um, family of DJ Juice, Brian Short. Um, they did a beautiful tribute to him, and I just want to send prayers out to his family. Also to Councilman Harrison and his family, and also Pastor Johnny Vaughn and his family and his church, his spiritual family as well. Thank you to our mayor and our director, uh, Wilson, for being here this evening. I know it was last minute, but as we all know, this, these are, uh, critical times for our city. And with this report, it's been very disturbing, so I just want to thank you for being present and just trying to clarify. I know we won't get all of our answers, um, this evening, and there's a lot to digest, there's a lot to comb through, and there's a lot more, um, questions and things we need to work through and before we make that decision. So just want to say thank you for being present, um, for that. Um, I also wanted just to take a few moments to make a couple of announcements. First, congratulations to Councilwoman Feliciano for being named one of New Jersey's most hard-working women in New Jersey by Assemblywoman Sumter. Shout out to you. Um, also, um, there's an expungement clinic, um, tomorrow at Razor Sharp, nine AM to twelve thirty PM, if anyone is interested or knows anyone who could benefit from the expungement clinic. It will be going on at Razor Sharp on Basteak Street, um, from nine AM to twelve thirty PM. Also, I just want to say, um, thank you to our public for being understanding with our technical difficulties and us having to postpone a meeting and then cancel the meeting. And so thank you for being understanding to that. It was definitely out of our control. Thank you to the Guatemalan Civic Association for allowing myself, the mayor, and police director to come out and, um, do an interview about the whole ICE situation. Again, as we heard before, please do not panic. Things are going to happen in order, and it's going to be in orderly fashion, and kids, please do, families, please do not be afraid to send your kids to school, because it is important for them to be there. Um, us as, at the, as Councilwoman Feliciano mentioned, we do work for the Trent Board of Education, and we do know that we are not releasing any students to anyone, um, that is not on the list to pick up. So please do not get frightened about that, but also have a plan in place, um, to the families. And one quick second. I just want to say congratulations to Councilwoman Figaro Katzenberg on her announcement that she recently made. Um, and I think that's all for this evening. Make sure I didn't forget anything. Yes, I think that's it. Thank you so much for being here this evening, and to our directors, DCA, Galogji Garcia, and our, my colleagues. Have, everyone have a good evening. Maybe I have a motion to adjourn. Second.
Brocall, Vice President Edwards. Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figaro Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams. Council President Gonzalez. Motion carried, meeting adjourned.
Yes.
Thank you.